Good evening, welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty, six P. M. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Is Pastor Josh Prettyman here? Don't see him, so, oh, there he is, alright. He'll be followed up by the invocation by Pastor Josh Prettyman from Twin Cities Baptist Church. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord God, thank you so much for this day that you've given us, and thank you for the lovely weather we've had today, and thank you for the opportunity to live in this great country, Lord, where we have many freedoms. We do pray tonight, Lord, for those that are in charge, for those that are on this council, Lord. We pray that you would, or give them wisdom as they make decisions, and pray that you would just guide them. Lord, I also want to pray for the police department, or that you would keep our police safe, or as they patrol the streets, and as they keep us safe, God, and I pray that you would help all of these to judge righteous judgments, Lord. And we do pray for our country, the things that are facing it, or that you would give us wisdom in the upcoming elections, and that you would just help us, or that you would be glorified. We do want to pray, Lord, I want to pray for all of those that have not been born, or that you would keep them safe, or that we would stand up for them, that we would protect them, or that we would have a hand over them, or that, or that you would help us to remember, to realize that all life is precious. And we thank you for your goodness again tonight, God, in your name I pray.
Thank you, Pastor. Susan, roll call, please.
Mr. Stinson, Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Ms. Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome back, Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor.
This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent, agenda claims and advisory committee reports, five A is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Are there any items the council wishes to remove? Take a motion. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor, make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, any comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Moves us to item number seven, special presentations, seven A, proclamation to declare March twenty twenty as Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Is there anyone here from Choices Treatment Center? Or Joan Yant in the audience? Since there's no representation, I'll read that proclamation from here. Office of the Mayor proclamation, March Problem Gambling Awareness Month, whereas there are individuals and families in our community adversely affected by problem gambling, and whereas compulsive gambling is often hidden from family members, social services, and mental health professionals, and whereas compulsive gambling often occurs in combination with other disorders such as chemical dependency and depression, and whereas it is important to raise awareness of the warning signs of compulsive gamblers and connect them with professional help. Now therefore, I, Mayor Rusty Height, Mayor of Bellevue, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim March twenty twenty as Problem Gambling Awareness Month, and urge citizens to learn more about consequences of problem gambling and help available, and help available through the Nebraska Gamblers Assistance Program. Item eight, organizational matters, eight A, approval of the revised employee handbook. Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm going to make a recommendation that we approve item eight A.
Second.
Motion made by Welch, seconded by Cook. And questions, Councilman Preister.
And I believe, Mayor, that we had a revised version of it that has some amendments in it, and so as those amendments were presented, I would move that entire redo with all of those amendments in it. My motion is to amend with the amendments that were presented by legal counsel.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Preister, seconded by Cook, to amend the employee handbook with the amendments that were brought forward by Marie prior to the meeting.
Yes, if I can speak, Mayor, the, they were not amendments brought forward by myself, they were amendments that were presented by different council members that then were incorporated and changed as of yesterday. I have those amendments outlined, if you want me to go through those for the public. Otherwise, all the council members have already reviewed those, and I've answered any questions. I think that would be sufficient.
Okay. Councilman Preister.
I, I just want to thank Marie for doing it. She put in extra time and she worked on it even on the holiday. We got all of the things, virtually everything that all of the council members asked for, so it's, I think, in good shape. I, I feel good about it, and I think it's very timely. It should have been updated a while back, but kudos to the administration and legal for doing it now.
Okay, any further comments, questions? Okay, motion by Preister, seconded by Cook for the amend, amendment. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Okay, and we have a motion by Welch, seconded by Cook, to approve the employee handbook as amended. Any questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item nine, approved citizen communication, no requests have been received. Item ten, liquor licenses, no applications have been received. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading, ordinance number three nine eight eight, an ordinance amending Bellevue Municipal Code by adding a new section eight dot one four regarding small wireless facilities. Councilman Shannon.
I move to approve ordinance three nine eight eight.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Cook. Comments or questions, Councilman Preister.
Mayor, there was a letter that we received just yesterday. I haven't had a good chance to go over some of the things in the draft that was there. I've since gotten other constituents who have contacted me. I would feel more comfortable, particularly since I believe the person from Verizon isn't able to be here tonight, to carry this over till the next meeting, so we have a chance to answer some questions, but at least I have a chance to look at some things that just came in at the last minute.
Marie.
I would just like to note that we did have public hearing at the last meeting, and nobody came and spoke, and the Verizon representatives were present at that meeting, which is one organization that we're working with, and they were present. They did have an opportunity to respond to the letter that you mentioned. Whether you want to continue it or not, that's up to the council, but I just wanted to put that out there. I do have one amendment that does need to be made in section eight point one four point oh three. It references two zero seven dash eleven, and instead of it saying two zero seven dash eleven, it should say eight point one four point one one. So I'm sure everybody got that, so repeat that motion, but I will need that amendment.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Shannon.
I'll make an amendment that we change section eight point one four oh three, where it reads two oh seven dash one one to eight point one four point one one.
Second.
Okay, motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to amend with the stated amendment, any questions on the amendment? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. We still have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Cook, to approve the ordinance.
As amended.
As amended, is there any further, Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I would make a, a motion that we carry this over to the next meeting and finalize the vote at that time.
Are there projects pending?
I'm not aware of any projects that are pending, but pursuant to federal law and state law, they can really do whatever they want right now, and our current ordinance is in violation of the law, which went into effect September first, two thousand nineteen. So they really can do whatever they want without our, this ordinance being passed. So there is some urgency to get the correct ordinance passed.
Alright, thank you.
We have a motion, is there a second? Okay, motion fails. Back to the original motion, motion by Shannon, seconded by Cook, any further comments, questions? Please vote.
No, it's on the wrong line. It didn't take that, since the motion died. The motion will be
To approve.
As amended.
As amended.
We've got four yes votes and one no vote.
Thank you. Ordinance number three nine eight eight nine, three nine eight eight passes. Item.
I would, I would make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign resolution twenty twenty dash zero five, which is the second half of this item.
So that's eleven one.
Eleven A one, yes.
Eleven A one, yeah.
I'll second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Cook, to approve eleven A one.
Call the question.
Next. Please vote.
Just a second. It's not taking the motion here, just a minute. Can we just do that by roll call?
Sure.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Preister.
Yes.
Mr. Burns.
Yes.
And Ms. Welch.
Yes.
Five vo, five yes votes.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, twelve A, ordinance number three nine eight six. Susan, could you read the ordinance, please? Shirley, you want to read it?
Shirley's going to read it, mine isn't, moving forward.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number three six one nine, by changing the zone classification of land located at or near sixteen oh six Camp Gifford Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I will open ordinance number three nine eight six up for public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against ordinance number three nine eight six? Please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Third reading will be March third, two thousand twenty, at six P. M. Here at the council meeting. Twelve A one, request to approve the small subdivision plat of lots two, one and two, Whispering Timbers Estate, replat six. And that'll carry forward to the next meeting as well. Twelve B, ordinance number three nine eight seven, request to rezone lot two, Twin Valley Church, replat one addition, from RG twenty eight to RG twenty eight dash P. S., for the purpose of multifamily residential development with site plan approval. Applicant is Encompass Design, Inc., general location is Fort Crook Road and Grenoble Drive. Susan, would you read the ordinance, please? Or? Okay, Shirley will read it.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number three six one nine, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about the southwest corner of Normandy Boulevard and Grenoble Drive, more particularly, particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I will open ordinance number three nine eight seven up for public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? And just a reminder, we try to have comments limited to five minutes a person, so try your best. And as a reminder, please state your name and address before speaking.
My name is Kyle Hazy with E. N. A. Consulting Group, one oh nine oh nine Mill Valley Road, Omaha, Nebraska, representing the applicant, along with myself, Rusty Snow, with Summit Housing Group, the developer, is in the audience as well, and will make himself available for any questions that you might have as we move on. The property that we are looking at tonight is located on the corner of Grenoble and Fort Crook Road, and is currently, currently vacant. As you can see here is the outlined, the piece of property right there in the middle. We have for the surrounding zoning on the site, there is BG to the north, and there's a little portion of RG twenty as well. RG twenty eight is to the east. We have Ag to the south, and Ag to the west, and Highway seventy five on the west as well. The property currently is RG twenty eight. We are requesting a rezone from RG twenty eight to RG twenty eight P. S., which is the planned subdivision. This follows the city of Bellevue's comprehensive plan and current zoning, which designates this property as multifamily use. As the zoning is now, the developer is allowed to build a one, three-story building with as many as a hundred and eighty-four units on the site. However, the developer wants to do something smaller in scale and with fewer units. What we are proposing is shown here on this site plan. We are proposing eight, two-story buildings with three and four-bedroom units and a clubhouse, with a total of only a hundred and seventy-five units compared to what the hundred and eighty-four that, that is allowed on the site. We need to change the zone to the RG twenty eight planned subdivision to allow more than one building on a single lot, which RG twenty eight does not allow. Besides the clubhouse, I can probably zoom in a little bit here, too, make this a little clearer. Besides the clubhouse on the site, which is located here in the middle, with the eight buildings surrounding it, on the west side, there's a location for raised garden units for each of the units. Those will be sprinkled, or provide irrigation for them, so each of the, the units within the development are able to grow their own vegetables and crops if they want. And then next to the, the clubhouse, there is also an area for a playground for any of the youth to use for recreation and sport in that area. And there is also a wide range of open space throughout the plan for the residents to take advantage of. What you see now is a proposed elevation for the clubhouse. You can see it's very nicely built with good materials. In the clubhouse, there'll be community rooms for gathering and neighborhood, neighborhood events. This is an example of the two-story units, the elevations, materials, and architecture will be similar to what you see here in this picture. And then for the interiors, this gives you an idea of level of materials and design that they'll have for the interiors as well. And these apartments will have either a manager or a service technician living on site as well, so they will be well-maintained. There'll be a local company, management firm, managing these, these units. On July twenty-second, at Life Spring Church, we hosted a neighborhood meeting for this project, and we shared our concept and listened to the neighbors' questions and concerns that they had. The main concerns for, for this project were the preservation of the trees, existing trees on the east side of the property. There's some concern about circulation through the site plan, pedestrian end, from a vehicular matter, separation between the proposed apartments and with the existing neighbors, and then traffic and access to the neighbor, to the neighborhood as a whole. Normandy Hills, the new development, and just the one access point off of Fort Crook Road. After the neighborhood meeting and the initial planning commission meeting, we changed our site plan to help address these concerns as much as we can. We pulled the buildings back from the east side. This allowed us to provide, you know, more separation between the neighbors and the new proposed units. It also gave us an opportunity of, with grading the site, to preserve those trees along that western, around that eastern borderline. And then it also gave us an opportunity to provide as much as twenty-foot elevation change between the new proposed units and the neighbors to the east as well, with the neighbors to the east being twenty-foot higher than the proposed new buildings. The most talked about concern, which we've been trying to address as much as we can, provide as much information as we can, is the concern of, and this was a concern before this development was brought about, is the one access point into the neighborhood, into Normandy Hills. When the Nebraska Department of Roads made improvements to Highway seventy five, they also changed the classification of Highway seventy five to an expressway. Once that became an expressway, state law would only allow access to high, to Highway seventy five from an on-ramp condition, not a right turn. As a result of this, the neighborhood lost their direct access points to Highway seventy five. There were, you can kind of see that they kind of still exist, there was one at Grenoble, or in the north, right on Highway seventy five, and then one on Normandy Boulevard on the south side as well. The county, as a part of these changes, then made improvements to Fort Crook Access Road and tried to do, improve that condition, and that provides that connection all the way to the north to Fair, Fairview Road. E. N. A. Consulting met with state and county officials back in, I think it was August when we initially met with them and had some contact with them. Their legal stand was that there is more than one access point, which because there, where Normandy meets Highway seventy five, not south access point, there is an emergency crash gate, and so this gives emergency vehicles the secondary access point required. They didn't have much to say besides that, and they were pretty confident that they'd met their obligations from state law to having more than one access point to a neighborhood with this many units. This, this site as a whole is pretty difficult, because the Highway seventy five and the natural grade that falls to the site, either to the east, even to the east Normandy, down Highway thirty five, is pretty tough. From our understanding, is the city of Bellevue is working on some additional business, commercial activity, maybe down here off of Highway thirty four, and the hope on that is that there would then be an access point from Highway thirty four connecting to the neighborhood to the point that is provided down here to the south already. But that'll make myself available for any questions that the mayor and city council might have, or any of the neighbors.
Councilman Shannon.
Yeah, I do have a question on the, the drawing that's up. We have a, what I'll call a frontage road coming from the north right now.
Yes.
Your development would block any possibility of that frontage road continuing down to the Highway thirty four on-ramp?
It would not be a direct route. I believe there is an access point, let's see if I can zoom in here. There's an access point right here, I think is what the planned connection would be.
Through the center of the subdivision?
What's that?
Through the middle of the subdivision?
Yeah, it, it, this access point wouldn't be designed as a, as a thoroughfare. As you can see here, that this, where this access, access point would be as planned, with topography and grade, the, and there was some initial plans and designs for this road made I don't know how many years back, I think that either the county- um, plans and designs for this road made, I don't know how many years back, I think that either the county or the state looked at. That this road came through, followed the, this tree line, and then came and connect to the, connect to this neighborhood. So I don't think this connection was ever meant to be, uh, uh, like a main arterial from one, ones, from Fairview Road down, it was just meant to provide an additional access point for the neighborhood to Highway thirty-four.
Okay, can you zoom back out so we can see both ends of that?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, just for the rest of the council, if you look along Highway seventy-five coming from the north, there is a frontage road that makes it all the way to Grenoble. But it stops there. If that frontage road were to continue down to Highway thirty-four eventually, we would have, you know, the access to the Highway thirty-four right there, and we would have Normandy Boulevard reconnected so that there are two good access points right there, but approving this will prevent that from ever being put through.
I see what Councilman Shan's saying, it's, it's, that would be, uh, ideal for like a commercial corridor to get traffic, I, high-volume traffic in and out, um.
And I think- It really bottlenecked the neighborhood.
With this, um, future, the comprehensive plan doesn't have commercial through this whole entire area. They have this as residential, so I don't believe that, um, I think providing that, you're gonna end up with residential and I think you're gonna provide more of, uh, maybe a safety issue if, if a through road goes all the way through from one end to the next. Um, I don't think it's meant to be, like I mentioned, I don't think it's meant to be an arterial.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that as well, um, with the, with the horseshoe of town homes that are down there now. I mean, you're still gonna have that corridor going by residential, so this, we can still put an arterial from, if Tammy wants to say something, but we could still put an arterial from the south side, Normandy out to, it wouldn't necessarily have to go through the neighborhood, but it would not connect to the north side, it's.
The, the, Mr. Hossi's correct, the frontage road was never meant to go through. Um, the state is not gonna let you connect up with that on-ramp, so it would never be a direct connection right along the highway anyway. Um, it would have to veer off to the east at some point.
Yeah, which, which wouldn't be a bad thing, but that's just not the way Normandy Hills was laid out. It's another one of our thirty-year-old, forty-year-old plans that nobody's looking at.
If that southern part of the arterial goes in, that, that makes this roadway through the middle of this development uh, a speedway to, uh, get to the southern end. Yeah, if we put this other- Right. Yeah. Right, but then through this development would be the only connection to go north. It's interesting.
It's just a problem that wasn't thought about a long time ago.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Hossi, just a couple of questions. You said that these are gonna be three to four-bedroom apartments, is that correct?
Correct.
So sometimes apartments are set up that people get to own them and sometimes they get to rent them. Are these for rent or for, to buy?
For rental.
Okay, and do you have any ideas to what you're gonna be charging rental rates? No, that's okay.
Speak to that.
No, I'm goo- I'm good with that.
Um, my name is Rusty Snow. I'm, uh, president of Summit Housing Development, uh, group. And, um, yeah, we're ranging, um, it i- it is a mixed income development. Um, so the income levels, uh, range from market rate all the way down to forty percent AMI. Um, with fifties and sixties also, so it goes from about seven-seventy, uh, for the three bedrooms at the lowest rate, all the way up to about thirteen-fifty, um, in, in, all, uh, everywhere in between.
Okay, so anywhere from seven-seventy to thirteen-fifties, what you're saying?
Yep.
And are the, these are, are the, these are based on the income of the tenants?
A portion, yes, so, you know, uh, twenty percent are market rate, which have no restrictions whatsoever. Those are obviously the higher level, um, re- rental rates. Um, but the, the other eighty percent are based on forty percent AMI, fifty percent AMI, and sixty percent AMI.
AMI is?
Uh, area mean in, income.
Okay, and then have you built these properties before?
Yes, we've got-
And where, where did you, in the Omaha area or?
Uh, nope, this would be our first project in the Omaha area.
Okay, where have you built these at before?
Uh, Montana, Wyoming, South Dakota, Colorado, Utah, and now Nebraska, hopefully.
How is it that we got lucky to have you come this way?
Uh, to be perfectly honest with you, there was, uh, um, these, these, this project uses housing tax credits through NIFA. Um, and with the floods that occurred, um, earlier, uh, or last year, um, there was a preference for this area in getting, uh, housing and, um, uh, credits towards this area.
We do have a need for that type of thing, so thank you for bringing this forward.
Sure.
Councilman Cook.
Sir, um, wh- where, is there a sidewalk or a walk path through there? Cause it looks like the main road is just gonna have parking on it. So one of the concerns was circulation of walking, biking, eh, how am I gonna get through there? Am I gonna be on the main drive?
So, yeah, I think there's sidewalks, uh, if you go all the way down and around the drive there. See on both sides and then connecting kind of smaller, uh, sidewalks to, to each of the buildings.
Are you receiving HUD money?
Uh, so we do have, uh, about a half a million of home funds, uh, that are, um, uh, going to be in the project, yes.
So by receiving federal money, that's the reason why there's gonna be only twenty percent paying the market rate?
Uh, between the home funds and the housing tax credits, yes.
So there go, th- there's no one and two bedrooms, so you're, you're definitely addressing families.
Correct.
Um, three and four bedrooms, you're looking at families of, you know, adults and potentially three, four, or five kids in the unit?
Uh, I, yes, we, we definitely are targeting, uh, families with children. That's, uh, that's, uh, that is our target market for sure.
And how many, how many, uh, residents, adults and kids, do you think, if this was occupied, that you would have in this complex?
So there's seventy-five units, so we would expect to see seventy-five families and some variety of, uh, level or number of children.
Isn't that quite a large group in such a small area?
It is, um, but I, I do think it's important to, uh, recognize that we're cutting the density in half on this project and what, on what's currently allowed.
Well, I think normally we see one and two bedrooms, maybe then a few three bedrooms, so.
Sure.
You know, usually it's maybe, you know, I, I think this is unique being a three and four-bedroom development.
I, I, I would agree. I would still think there would be significantly more cars, density, everything else if we went ahead with how we're allowed to build this project as of today.
What are the square footage of a three-bedroom and a four-bedroom?
I think it's, uh, twelve-fifty for the threes and right around fourteen-fifty for the fours, so they're not, they're not huge.
But, but you, you, the other unit, yeah, I, I mean, you're gonna put in a hundred and seventy-five units, the other one was like a hundred and eighty-five.
Yeah, so I didn't wanna make a quick correction, it's seventy-five units.
I heard a hundred and seventy-five.
It said a hundred and five, it's seventy-five units, so it is half, less than half of the allowable density.
Well, that makes a big difference.
It, it does, yes.
I can understand the neighbors' concern wanting that, uh, buffer with the trees there. I just don't know if that's a great development there, but I'm willing to listen to what people have to say.
Sure.
If we have other speakers.
Any other questions for Mr. Snow, and then I'll let the public about, well, might bring you back up, so stay close. All right, the public, public hearing is open, uh, on ordinance number three-nine-eight-seven. If anybody else in the audience would like to come forward and speak, please come forward, state your name and, uh, address and sign in.
Good evening. Name is Dan Ruffner, I live in the neighborhood. And you had some discussion about the roadways. Can you scroll that out just a little bit?
Mr. Ruffner, could you please state your address for the record?
Eight zero six Bordeaux Avenue.
And also sign, sign the-
Thank you.
List, please.
Well, you had some discussion about the, the roadways that were there. The original plat, whenever they were gonna cut us off from Highway seventy-five, was in the lower part. It makes the little loop through the area, and that lower part, that was closest to seventy-five, where Normandy, that roadway was going to go out, go south, pass that farmstead that was there. Then, well, Rusty, you live up there, and then it was supposed to go down across the, the fields to the south and tie in where Le Platte access was going to be. It was gonna tie up there and make a, an intersection right there.
I tell ya, I was just to jump in there, I, just being down in that area for decades, um, been to several meetings and those conversations with the state went back and forth, and I know it's hard for one person to keep track of all those. They did have a south entrance, and I think the neighbors were complaining that that took so much longer to loop back around and go north. So then they worked on a north issue, but I, I totally agree that-
Yeah.
You guys should have had two entrances to that area.
The, uh, fire station, I was on the fire department for forty years, and that was one of our big concerns to get into that area. If the roadway was to the south, was the extra two or three minutes it would have taken to access. We would had to come down seventy-five, get on Platteview, and then migrate back. Um, now our roadway is to the north that comes up to Fairview. Uh, have they ever settled if that roadway is substantial enough for the amount of housing population that's in there at this point? Without having the addition of an extra, hmm, I don't know, how many folks? If they're three and four bedroom units, how many extra cars would that be every day?
I might refer that over to Mr. Roberts, but, um, I believe that's gonna be the county's issue now, if the traffic ever becomes so much that they increase that to a four-lane or until the city annexes it. You have any comment on that, Jeff?
Well, yeah, currently it's, it's a county-owned, uh, road. Um, as far as the condition of the road, I'm not familiar enough with it, I don't have the numbers to tell you whether, uh, what the traffic could be like, there'd have to be some more things looked at to determine what the road can hold.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they, they put that roadway in, they did put, I think it was four-foot extra wide shoulders on it last summer, because of the, the roadway was just a, I guess it was twenty-four feet wide. Had two twelve-foot lanes, then they added the shoulders on. There's still no, eh, um, people can walk down there, but they're either walking in the roadway or they're walking on the shoulders. I'm concerned about the construction traffic that will be entailed with putting this in there. You, as you know, uh, heavy cement trucks and delivery vans and, and all the extra construction folks are gonna probably tear up that, that roadway that we have now. They had to go mill it off here two years ago, cause it got all ripply and they milled it down and, and put a new overcoat on it.
Yeah, if, um, depending on who takes ownership, I would, if the, the city takes this, annexes it, and with that, we have that. Before the development would start, we'd wanna get a condition assessment of the road, and then we'd have some kind of a, I'll just call it an agreement with the developer that whatever damage they do to the road, they have to repair it.
Okay.
Which is what we typically do on any construction project.
Mm-hmm, well, um, you can put me down as a no for this. I think it's probably, uh, passed the planning commission, and I'm a bit a little, bit out of town and that, so this is the first meeting that I've been able to, to come and voice my opinion at. But is, um, I would be a, a no for this development program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward.
Hello. Um, my name is Celine, and I live at one-one-one-five Grenoble Drive. Can I scroll in on this?
What's your last name? Is that a line?
Monif, M-O-N-I-F, as in Frank.
Okay.
I live right here. This house right here.
Okay.
Okay, um, as you can see, I have some trees that I'd like to protect, uh, which are not these, right there. Um, I just wanted to talk because I think I have a unique review point. I live right there in front of the access road. I watch this section of the road every single day. Um, as they have already stated, we only have one access. You cannot get into the southern area down here because of the gate. I'm sure you're all familiar with this, this is a three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine. Uh, the fire crews, the ambulances, the first responders do not have a way to access that lock, they cannot open it. So our emergency exit is pretty useless, honestly, um, if emergency crews can't use it. Um, about this access road, uh, first and foremost, as you can see right here, let me try to zoom in a little bit more. I know this for a fact, the sidewalk does not proceed past my property. Um, so their sidewalk here is going to dead-end. They're gonna have to build another sidewalk to go all the way up here because there is no access. Just an FYI as far as, uh, anyone going there. Um, the access road here, the sidewalk ends right there. Um, as people have already said, as far as our access road is, this is a very dangerous road. If you have not been on it, I suggest you drive it. Um, this is built on a flood plain. This entire area floods. Uh, what they did to make the road was to build up the area surrounding it, most of it. So they had to pile up dirt, do the road on top of it, uh, except for a section like right around here, where it actually kind of levels out and you can see how the dirt will flow over the road when it gets really, really wet. Um, so to, uh, make the road wider, you're gonna make some major construction, you're gonna need to bring in more dirt. You're gonna have to build that up, you're gonna have to put the cement on top of that. This is gonna be a very big project, widening this road to get more than one ac- or more than a two-lane road here. Uh, they did just put in a shoulder, but the shoulder is roughly, and I do not have the measurements, I'm sorry, but roughly about two feet on each side. Um, so in order to explain the fact that this is the only way in and out of the neighborhood, and they are talking about bringing families into this already crowded neighborhood, um, for them to go anywhere, we have a small, tiny little park here, that's it. Um, for them to go to Fairview, where there is no sidewalks, no access, they're basically gonna be walking along a two-lane road with, that drops off on each side with no lights. It's extremely dark down there. Um, if you don't see the blinkers on a car that's parked there, cause the cars can't get over, you're gonna hit it. So basically, this is wider than the shoulder area that people would walk to get to Fairview and go. And so you're talking kids, families, they're gonna wanna walk to the convenience store up here. This is not a danger, this is not a safe road, and the two feet on each side is not enough room for people to be walking, not enough room for a car to be pulled over. Um, we have multiple evidence of the times where this road has been completely blocked due to winter. Um, on January eighth, there was a, uh, police incident. I'm not exactly sure what happened, I think there was an, a shooter call or something like that, you can look it up, it's public record. Um, this entire road was blocked to the point where the kids had to be dropped off at, uh, a facility, a church, I believe, down the street, because they couldn't get through. Um, during the winter, this intersection, this is a hill by the way, um, this intersection is extremely difficult. I have multiple videos of people not being able to get up and down this driveway at all, this Grenoble Drive, even with a snowplow. In one of my videos, the snowplow is leaving, and there's a car stuck, unable to get up the hill. Every winter, we have a roadblock where people park all along this side of the road because they can't get up the we- the hill every single winter, no matter if the plows come or not. So now we're acting, asking to put in seventy-two, so, something like that, units with families on top of that, and all their cars in here, trying to get into this one section where we're already stopping at every winter. Um, I don't think that's right, I don't think that'll work. Um, and that's basically my concerns. Uh, like I said, this is a dangerous drive at night. This is dangerous in the winter. This is dangerous in the winter. We can't handle it as it is with what we have, putting a couple hundred more people in there and kids. This isn't gonna work. Um, I know in the past, in the Bellevue leader and even in the minutes of these uh, meetings, they've talked about the fact that neighborhood likes us. No, one or two people said they liked the development. Uh, if you go and start pulling the people who live in the townhouses, the ones who are gonna be affected, we're all voting no. There's a lot of chatter online about that, so I'm a big no. I don't think we can accommodate this development. And I'm just putting in my address before I leave this.
Alrighty, thank you. Anybody else wishing to come forward? Please come forward.
I would encourage you to get through your neighbors to uh, talk to the councilman.
Oh, uh, they're usually on next door, but I would love to.
Okay, I mean, we, we have emails available on the city website so for you guys to communicate with us.
I will get on that today. Thank you.
Quick question for Tammy, um, the sidewalk's generally required, isn't it?
It's actually on the site plan. Mr. Hossi doesn't have it on his conceptual, but on the actual site plan that's in your packet, it does show a sidewalk that connects. And yes, it is required, um, so that would be required no matter what.
How is everybody?
Pretty good.
Good, good to hear. Hi, uh, when is this uh, development?
Need your, need your name and address first.
Sorry, I got, at one side, didn't do the other. Uh, Otmer Stevens, thirteen six oh one, South Twenty-sixth Street. Um, the uh, the, the development, how soon will that be done?
So it usually takes about a year.
About a year?
Uh, to, to build.
Okay.
Depending on uh, tonight and, and some other additional time to get designed.
Understand, understand. So you're looking at at least a year before it's completed. But it'd be completed in sections, so you'll have occupancy prior to the year.
In a typical scenario, we'd have some buildings that would, in theory, uh, be allowed to have temporary occupancy while the rest of it is built, yes.
Okay, are you, are you going to be building the roads?
The interior roads.
Mister.
Are they going to be up?
Mister Stevens, um, can you direct the questions to Tammy so we can get everything recorded?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then if we have a.
You want me to come upstairs?
Come on.
If Tammy's got a question, let's leave, yeah.
Okay, um, so you're gonna be responsible for building the roads?
Now stand in front of us so I can hear you. Sorry, a lot of instructions. We're live TV.
Okay, uh, you're, you're going to be building the roads?
The interior roads and maintaining them, yes.
Okay, um, are they going to be equivalent to the roads that are already in the sub, subdivision surrounds?
So that would be a discussion with planning, but typically our interior roads would not be up to a, you know, a major thoroughfare, you know, standard.
It wouldn't be.
They, they are still built to city standards, so we do have subdivision regulations. Um, while they may not be built to a major arterial, they'll still be built to city standards, so it'd be like your typical residential street.
Alrighty, uh, so you're looking at a year before it's completed? And we don't have any sort of timeline for this extra access road. Is that correct?
Nope.
Boy, I feel sorry for you people. Who's got the key to that gate?
State.
The state has the key to the gate. I saw four locks on it.
Sure, Bree?
There is a pending lawsuit. It's not involving the city because the city does not own this property. Um, it's involving the SID Normandy, um, against the Department of Roads and the county. Um, and so that's currently in the district court. I have not checked it in the last month or so, but there wasn't a lot of progress going on in that case um, that I did look at, but Dean Jungers is the attorney on that case. Um, it's not something the city's handling, but the state owns that and they are discussing um, compensation and other issues in that lawsuit.
Okay, so if an emergency vehicle needed to get through that gate, there is no one but the state to contact.
Perry has something to say.
Sir Fire Chief Perry Guido?
We would just, we, we have bolt cutters and, and that's, the way it was designed is that we would just cut the locks off, so.
So, okay, um, but the, the stinger on the whole thing, well, I, I need to digress a little bit. Fort Crook Road, um, we're all familiar with the accident last night that killed two there on County, and seventy-five?
Yep.
A head-on collision, four lanes. Uh, that's not four lanes out there. So if you have a head-on collision out there, that place is bottled up. Nobody's gonna get, we'll say north of uh, of the uh, Grenoble. That place is bottled up. Now I've walked out there and uh, well, I, I didn't walk on the right away because it was nothing but mud. You won't get through there with a vehicle. It will be blocked, simple as that. And in turn, um, what fire department currently, I think it's one down there by me off of the, was it Twenty-Fifth Street?
Bellevue currently covers.
Um, we'll say Twenty-Fifth Street's the closest. That's a long way to go, long way to go around, especially if you're gonna have to come through the emergency gate. So, I don't think, it's not my territory per se. I don't think that's a very good idea until we get a road built for some sort of access. And it seems like the state is guilty by association because they built uh, a side part of the uh, road there on seventy-five to enter that gate. And then also on thirty-four below, um, there's an access road there that we've, I think y'all have talked about. So the state, I believe, is guilty of uh, abandonment. And I think that ought to be brought up as an issue or a lawsuit there counselor. You might look into it, but anyway. That's my two cents. I'll leave you alone now. Now if I come up again, will I have to sign you out again?
One time, you got, you got anything else to say? That's on, that's on the agenda tonight, so. Um, also, I just wanna confirm, we don't, the city does not own that. It's not in the city. That's county and um, there has been lawsuit, there is a lawsuit in place right now, so there's a lot going on, on that access right now. Anybody else wishing to come forward and speak?
Mister Mayor, I have a question for the two resi, oh, as you're coming up, for the two residents, um, Ms. Ms. Celine, because I'm not sure how to say your last name, and Mister Ruffner, you both live in the neighborhood. Is it, and you may have to come up to the podium so we can get this recorded, but my question is, if the accessibility, you know, the gated was reopened, would you still be against this development or are you just against it because you don't like what it's gonna do? I'm, I'm trying to understand all of that.
Maybe they could think about it.
Yeah, just maybe think about it and we'll let this lady talk and then you can come up and help me out with an answer, please.
Um, my name is Kathy Arnalska. I live at one-five-one-three-two Normandy Boulevard, so I actually live in one of the townhomes that would be next to this housing area. I will say, I, I wanna give credit to the developer 'cause I was at that meeting at the initial church. Um, I do feel like they listen to some of our concerns, um, as much as they can at this point. And I'm, may or may not be saying anything new, but my concern is that, um, the amount of traffic or cars, because I truly believe that if you have a three and four bedroom home, you possibly could e, have two families living in there. You easily could. Um, you could have multiple cars. I think they allow two cars per unit. I don't know that that's going to be enough and then we're going to have a lot of on, on, um, you know, trap, parking on our roads, so that's gonna obstruct some views, especially along Normandy Boulevard where I live. Um, I don't really wanna look at a bunch of cars parked there over a long period of time. Um, I just think those are some concerns. Some other concerns I brought up is, um, we are gonna have families there. We know that. Um, we're gonna have kids in the summer and we also know that some of those kids are not gonna be supervised. It happens. Those parents have to work. There isn't anything in our, we have a great, we have a park, we have a gr, I love where I live. But for the holtz, for two or three months, uh, this summer, we don't really have a lot of recreational options. We have our park. And I don't know if these gentlemen are going to help us sustain that park because I do know, even though they're gonna have a playground, those um, children are not gonna stay within that small area when they know we have a basketball court down the hill and another park. So right now, that's maintained through our CID and our funds. Um, how, where do, what other areas or what are things do the kids there then will have access to if they don't have transportation? Because we aren't connected to any city transportation. There are no pools in the area. The only thing we have right now is the quick shop up the hill, which they'd have to walk on the side of the roads. And that's kind of a popular spot for teenagers in the summer, get Gatorade. Let's be honest, bag of Cheetos, mom's not home, what are we gonna do? We get bored. It happens. So that's a safety concern, I think, for those families as well. Increased traffic, we have a lot. I, it, the wind is horrendous. We're gonna have a lot of snowdrifts. I just said this. It blew a light pole down this year on my corner. It was so hot, you know, there's just, it's just a way. The other thing is with the way Fort Crook is, when you get to the bottom there, now we have a four-way stop with all the traffic coming down Fairway, uh, Fairview with all the traffic coming from Fort Crook, from all the traffic other, that is a congestion. I'm surprised we haven't had an accident because people are not very good about stopping at those stop signs. We're gonna have increased of bus, buses for kids. We're gonna have more kids walking, which is awesome, but I just think there's some real safety concerns. And I do, no offense, but these people, who, one person that I don't know living on there that's gonna maintain, um, I don't know, I guess proved to see it. I don't have anything, but I do concerned about safety for us and safety for any new resi, residents. I really don't think we have the access to do it. And putting an access off of Highway thirty-four, it doesn't help anybody 'cause anybody living in that neighborhood is gonna come down Fort Crook Road. And yes, that road has been blocked many times that we can't get emergency vehicles in. So I really think that until we have a road, till you can guarantee, and I can physically see it and I feel like we have served everybody in that housing area, we can't approve it. This isn't a, oh, it's coming. We all know how government works, no offense, but it isn't a speedy process. And I don't think it's, it's not worth the risk of somebody getting hurt. Either through traffic, either for not being able to get the um, emergency vehicles they need 'cause that did happen to an, I, another uh, of our residents that lived in one of, took fifteen minutes for a rescue squad to get there. It's not, that is not acceptable. It really isn't. For anyone. So I, I'm just saying, until you, somebody, county, city, state, shows us a road, makes us feel we're safe, I don't care who's living there, we need that. It can't go on. Thanks.
Thank you. Tammy, how did the uh, um, they put into a park fund or how did that work in this subdivision?
The developer placed into a park fund, uh, when the property is platted. So that would've been done at the time the property was platted. It would not be done in this type of a situation.
My name is Linda McGary. I live at one-five-one-three-zero Normandy Boulevard, which is right at the you know, um, south end, right where the entrance is there that's gated right now. If they were to open that gate and allow people to go out that road, they couldn't come in unless they were coming from Platteview. It would be a right in and a right out. The problem is, right after you go past where we live, there's a hill coming from Platteview and you can't see our entrance. And those cars are coming seventy miles an hour. When we used to be able to go across to Platteview Road, when it was the old road, there were a number of accidents. There were two girls killed at that intersection 'cause we didn't have a stoplight. So opening that south entrance is not gonna fix the problem. And anybody who comes out of this new development using that south entrance is still going to go around Normandy Boulevard and down Grenoble to that stop at the end of that street and have to go Fort Crook to get out. The problem is that road cannot handle the traffic and at the point we're at now, there's no way to fix that. That's my biggest concern, so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to answer the question you had. Would I be opposed to the development if the road or the situation was different? Um, with the road being the way it is, I think it's a no-brainer. I don't think it will work. Um, if we had a second entrance, although you're right, the south one would not be an ideal entrance. Um, I would still be highly concerned, honestly. Uh, again, if you have not been out to see that cornfield, I look at it every day. It's um, the drainage on that cornfield, I believe someone mentioned it in the first one. The drainage of that cornfield is horrendous. It's made, uh, I used to watch it, kinda do a little stream in the lot next to me every time it rained, and I mean, it was a stream, not like a trickle. I'm talking about several feet wide gushing onto uh, Grenoble Drive right there. It literally, the water comes from here and just goes straight down to here and comes out right in this area right here. Um, since they did construction in this area and we're just trying to work on this, there's now, if you go out there, it's about a, I would say about, what, five to six feet deep uh, trench that has been carved out by the water now that runs literally right along here and goes all the way down to here where the little entrance is. So the drainage of that cornfield is ridiculous. And yes, the trees do provide coverage and trying to develop that area, cram that many people in there, I still don't think it'd be a good idea, even if we did have the road access. Did that answer your question?
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Please come forward.
Um, yeah, you asked if I would still be uh, against this. Um, probably not if we had better access and a better road. I, I didn't know that this was, is this where, uh, well, it just, that roadway going north, it's called Fort Crook Run South. You have a standard two-lane road, shoulders and then drop-offs on both the, the east and the west. Um, I don't know if they can improve right there where Grenoble comes up because the, the fence that divides the state highway seventy-five, I don't think there's enough room between the edge of, of the pavement that we have now down to that fence. And like I say, they'd have to uh, bring a whole bunch of dirt to fill that in where they would put it on the uh, on the west side, which would be to the left, if they would make two lanes over on that side. And you get down to uh, to Fort Crook Ru, or down to Fairview's road, then you have a, a screwed up intersection down there. And I don't, I'm retired now, so I don't have to deal with traffic down there at seven to seven forty-five in the morning like a lot of, like a lot of these folks do, but I've heard that that four-way stop is just, um, well, it's everybody for himself, nobody, you know, a lot of people don't stop. They come down, they wheel around if they got a chance and traffic backs up up on the Fairview pretty substantially with the left-hand turners wanting to go towards Offutt Air Force Base. Um, at this point, um, you know, if we had better access into the road, had another access someplace, I don't know if I'd be for it then. It's just a lot of, of extra cars, a lot of extra personnel. And like I'd mentioned earlier, you know, there was a concern that the size of subdivision that's in there now with one access point. I know when this was, when they first uh, closed ours off, they said it was uh, against state statutes to have that much population with only one access point. Uh, I don't know if the uh, planning commission, do they?
I don't think it's a state statute, but it certainly isn't something we would approve in today's standards. I don't.
I don't think it's a state statute, but it certainly isn't something we would approve in today's standards, I don't believe.
Right, so Normandy Hills was, you know, constructed back forty years ago in the seventies, so it was done under a different set of codes. As Ms. Robbins pointed out, there is a lawsuit pending. I can tell you that the state. The state's uh opinion is that there are two access points, albeit one is an emergency access, so. That's their contention. Obviously, we'll see how that plays out in court, but that's what the Department of of Roads would tell you at this point.
Yeah, I don't know how they, the state can say there's two when one is permanently, well. Almost permanently gated off. The uh the Grenoble Drive that in this picture, that shows going out on the seventy-five, but that's fenced off. There's no way that they can.
The emergency access is to the south where it's it's.
And that really, I yeah, I don't know how they can consider that a second access if it's gated with and chained and locked.
That's why there's courtrooms.
Yeah, but the things run slow in a courtroom. So, um but that just the concern is the limited access into the area. The extra population, the cars, I I don't see any that have a. Um any garages. No garages for for cars, so they'll all be parked out on the street. And like the young lady said, that drainage off of that. It all runs to the north, right behind her property, and the gully is that deep and that wide. Or cause all the water from the north half of that funnels over into that area. Uh where do they plan on running the storm sewers off of this, off of this?
If if I could point out, so um to to the point about runoff on this conceptual, you can see on the north side. There is a detention area um based on current standards. Um we're part of the overall uh watershed partnership. They will have to control the first half into runoff, so they will have to accommodate. Um they cannot. Increase the amount of runoff that any neighbors are taking on and they will actually control what goes off of the property. Part of that will be done through that detention area to the north, which is next to.
Oh, that little block up there is the retention area?
It's a detention area, which is next to um.
Cause that's where all the water.
And so, they they do have, they will have to submit a SWIP plan as part of their building permit. And our engineers have preliminary preliminarily approved their grading and drainage plan. So, they will have to control any runoff from that site.
Okay. Also, uh in your planning, where was the sewer gonna go off of this? Do they have a plan for where the sewer was gonna?
It connects into the south Serpier, the.
Were they gonna run a sewer line down next to Fort Crook Road clear down to Fairview?
It's something that's accounted for.
Correct. It should be right there in Normandy. I can pull it up quick, but um. I believe there is a manhole right there, so I don't know, Mr. Hazy, if you remember where you were gonna connect in, but I assume it's Normandy Boulevard.
Cause some of the duplexes that are there at the bottom. At the the turn on, it says Normandy Drive, they've got jet pumps that pump the sewage up to a manhole. Up there where Cedar View comes in. So, there's no, that whole bottom part. Doesn't really have any uh direct sewer line. I'm not sure where the the apartments, the blue buildings, the blue top buildings there up in the the top on the right. I guess I don't know.
There there is actually, sorry, I have it pulled up. I know you can't see it from my computer, but there is actually sewer on the northern portion of that property. So, I assume that that's where they're tying into. It comes along the frontage road. It's on Grenoble Drive and then this particular piece of property, the vacant cornfield. Actually has sewer there on the northern side already.
Okay, alright, thank you.
My name is Alicia Yoder. I live at ten twenty-one Grenoble Drive, just a couple houses into the neighborhood on the north side there. Um couple things that I was um concerned about, um obviously the access road, so I'm not even gonna. Everybody else has touched on that quite significantly. Um and my opinion, if we reopen the south access point, that that's uh car accidents and. Possible lawsuits waiting to happen, so I would never open up that second route again, even though.
That that won't happen, the state state won't allow that.
Yeah, I'm just my opinion. Um if we were to have the second access point, I believe. That there is the potential that this could be a good idea. Um but um my concern right now, um being a first-time mom, um is schooling. As far as I'm aware, there's currently no new schools being developed in the Bellevue area. Um and right now, I have to go to um Fort Crook Elementary and I have to drive by Fairview Elementary in the process. Um so, I don't know if the additional seventy-five families plus kids is going to be affecting the. Uh school populations at all, but I believe that is something to be looked into. Again, the uh access point is uh something that I look into. And then right on the Fort Crook and Grenoble Drive, currently Grenoble has a stop sign. Um if that road were to continue south, would that become a three-way stop, a two-way stop, just general? Questions as to whether uh us and the neighborhood are gonna be stuck with a stop sign while they get a a thorough passage or not. And then in regards to the park within the development itself, I know I'm an avid walker. I like to walk around the neighborhoods. Um so, it would be a great um additional walking area. However, I believe that um. People in the neighborhood would also be interested in accessing the park because there'd be an additional walking space for us. Um along with, again, people from this new development wanting to, again, access the Normandy Park, so. Um wanna make sure that they're aware that some people from our neighborhood would be interested in playing there and vice versa, so making sure that they're. Accommodating toward that. Um I believe this development could potential, has potential. Um however, again, with the access and the safety, I do not believe it's the right time to develop this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for you. You live on Grenoble?
Correct.
Okay. One of my grave concerns for that street is the winter when people can't get up that hill.
Yes.
And the cars parked at the bottom, cause you know when across the street there, it that industrial building, they used to have the U-Haul trucks? We used to have to get them in and out of there and you can't even get through there in the winter because no one can get up Grenoble.
Correct. Anytime there is a lovely lovely blizzard, um I attempt to stay home whenever possible, just because I know it's. Almost impossible to get in. Um I'm lucky enough that I have a newer car that in new wheels that can handle it. However, even then, it's very slow going. I still have to weave my way up the road in order to get over it. And then I hunker down the rest of the night and pray that the snowplows can get to us the following morning. I live on. Not on top of the hill, but just a few houses down going down that hill, so I have to go up the hill both ways and both hills are just lovely. I believe that. That hill is just a huge matter of contention in regards to how access into the neighborhood works. Whether it be emergency or just normal daily affairs or even a blizzard.
Okay, well, I would echo your concerns and add, Mr. Mayor, that I think Grenoble's gotta get fixed as well before we start adding anything into here. Because when we can't get the cars into the subdivision already, adding a hundred and fifty new cars to sit down there at the intersection. On a two-lane road, yeah, this ain't gonna work.
Just a quick question on that. I've heard that a couple times this evening. Do the Sarpy County snowplows hit your area fairly early or do they?
Um we are either the first ones hit just because we happen to be on their way, or we are the absolute last ones because, oh yeah, we forgot. It's a fifty-fifty shot. It's been hard to say because we only really had the one or two snows this year. So, that hasn't really been as impactful as it has been, say, last year. Last year was just terrible in general with.
Sure, Mr. Roberts wrote that down in case we end up taking care of that. They do have a question on the stop sign. There's probably, is that county or who decides?
Regards to that, um since it's a CID, if they, the CID can control that, they would um ask permission to the county for review it. County Board would then okay, you know, any traffic signs.
My guess is they'd put a three-way stop sign there at that point, but I don't. Whatever your said, I guess, is gonna ask the county to do. That's what it sounds like. If that, if it takes place. Thank you.
Um you said to email you uh.
Yes, ma'am.
For the neighbors. Would you also like things like the video of cars being stuck with the snowplow? Leaving the neighborhood showing that even after freshly plowed snow?
We we wanna hear from you guys. We wanna see what's going on in your neighborhood, so please send everything.
Plows and you still can't get up.
And and all six council members have our email on the website, so.
And I was just gonna clarify one thing for you guys as far as the storm drains. There's a manhole cover about right here where the pointer is right now. And then there is a storm drain down here and I know they said something about a reservoir right here, but I can tell you any resident from this. Uh neighborhood will let you know that when we have heavy rains, that storm drain cannot handle what's coming into there now. And this area right down here also gets a little flooded, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay, hi. Uh my name's Heidi Albert and I live at one four nine one five Versailles Street in Normandy Hills. And I just wanted to um talk a little bit about the hill that you were talking about on Grenoble. Um my son has gotten stuck. Um several times on that hill and couldn't make it up and he's had to actually walk from there all the way home. And he had to leave his car. And then wait for um the snowplow, so. And it does get really bottlenecked there and that the day they had, there was some kind of disturbance. We never did really know what was going on at the apartments when all the police, there must have been about twenty different police cars. Um it was Bellevue and Sarpy.
I'll clarify that. I think, uh correct me if I'm wrong, Captain Stute and Holtz, but I think there was two different calls. One was a domestic call and another one was a. Shots fired, but they were two separate and there were hunters in the backfield, so it was more or less kind of a false.
Um I'm aware of the one incident. I'm not aware of the other, but there was a SWAT team call out in that area and I believe shots fired. Was the the police presence that you're speaking of.
So, but the way that it was right there at the apartments and on that hill, I think there's a lot of different people that took pictures. Um I actually had to turn around and go back and wait to be able to get into my neighborhood after coming home from work. Because we only had the one entrance. So, I waited. So. Um right now, I guess my opinion, um that does look like a very nice um area that they're. They wanna develop, that has been. We've lived in the neighborhood for about twenty-five years with that being open. But the way with that, the road, the way it is right now and the way we're about. Those people would have to come out, where would meet up with Grenoble and everything. I just, I don't think this is a good time to do something like that. So. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Public hearing still open? Anyone else wishing to come forward?
Redevelop the road. The problem is also is that right here. When you come around that corner, there is no way to get motion to go up the hill because you have, it's, there's not, it's like you turn and hill. So, there's no way to kind of get gun it to get up the hill if you had a chance. So, that whole design, this whole corner would have to be. And I also wanted to point out that coming down that hill is no. Uh it's sheer ice. There's, that is dangerous. It's dangerous. And with the um median uh decorations that we have, which we all love, because it's our flowers and everything and I'm not. It really is a one-way, a one-lane road, so if somebody's stuck, you can't even go around it and there are times where people. Who have been stuck have gone up the wrong side of the street to go around it, which again, pros, you know. Causes danger, so it it is what it is. It's a reality and we live with it every winter. But we love where we live, so we put up with it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Joe White. I live at one five one two two Normandy. I'm right at the loop in the townhomes. My question always back of my mind, I've attended the Planning Commission and this one, is why here? Any engineer, any architect should have seen the problem. If they made it through any college anywhere in the country, they should have seen the problem with put this much in this small of an area. Without a lack of proper entrance and exit. I've looked at Summit's website. I've looked at the pictures of their developments through the different states. Personally, I'd like to live in a lot of them places like Spearfish, South Dakota. Wyoming, Montana. There's one thing that kind of the majority of what they build. Even contradicts this because they put it in open spaces. Montana's got open spaces, Wyoming's got open spaces, Spearfish, South Dakota, beautiful area, got open spaces and that's where they have put their facilities that I've seen. Couple of them are kind of in cramped areas, but most are not. So, they should have been able, been aware of what's happening here. It's not like we don't have a little land for sale in that area out there that'd be much more appropriate. Maybe a reconsideration on where they want to put their development. I don't know what the background is and how the land was procured and developed and stuff, maybe if it's. A need in the area, it needs to be put in a more appropriate area instead of congestion us. And if it is approved. With it, it's been toy- pointed out, there's gonna be a lot of children there. There's only a couple of bus stops. Those townhomes aren't like most townhomes. There is no public, no uh community land there. This is all private property. If they do put that in there, we need something to prevent those kids taking the shortcuts. Through our property, head for the bus stop or make sure there's a bus stop in there, period. But to me, it seems like the logical conclusion, in fact, most economical conclusion, look elsewhere. You can go a mile down the road and find a big plot of land for sale, both sides of the road. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, I think Bellevue is a lovely place. Public hearing is still open. Anybody else wishing to speak?
I just wanna. Kyle Hazy, one oh nine oh nine Mill Valley Road. Uh just wanna address some of the concerns, questions. As Tammy pointed out, we do have a connection of a sidewalk up along Genoble, Genoble, Grenoble, sorry. Um just had a, that cropped out when I drew this and colored it. Someone else had brought up multiple families within a particular unit. I know with the funding and uh the process and the programs. That Summit goes through, that is something that is not allowed and they will lose their funding and rights, uh if they do allow that within their, within their developments. Um as, you know, a lot of people talk about Grenoble being an issue with climbing up this road, whether it's blocked. Um if anything, this uh development would help solve that problem as well or help out. Of course, they wouldn't always want somebody cutting through, but if this ne- neighborhood is blocked or the Grenoble is blocked, it gives an opportunity. For a secondary access point through this piece of land to get to Normandy and get throughout the rest of the development. So, it'll help with some of those concerns if there is an emergency accident or emergency police call. And those roads are blocked off for that reason. It does give us an access route for people that have to get through without having to wait. Tammy also pa- uh pointed out the uh detention basin towards the, uh on the north side, we actually do have three of them. Plan throughout development to help with runoff and we will need to meet all those uh government standards and uh. Runoff requirements before those um. Go into the the so- storm sewer systems. I don't know if there's anything else. Uh this site is zoned, uh mixed-use, or I mean multifamily. Um and that's what is part of um the comprehensive plan. So, it is something that can move forward, um as is, I guess, as well. So it is something that can move forward, um, as is, I guess, as well.
Do you have one additional concern I'd like to address? In your comments earlier, you said that, uh, after your meeting with the, uh, townhome owners that, uh, you lowered the elevation?
Yes.
So that these buildings are gonna sit twenty feet below the townhouses?
Yeah, so there's a slope up against that back east end. And they, we, we didn't really lower it too much more than what we previously had. We just, we had some, initially had some retaining walls on this backside, uh, to take up some of that slope. Uh, pushing those buildings farther to, uh, the west allowed us to get rid of those retaining walls and have more of a natural slope and saving, saving those trees. Cause there is existing right now, there is about fifteen feet, twenty feet of slope in some of those areas right now on that site.
Okay, and the detention ponds that we're talking about, this is only to control excess water that's in addition to what's already there. Is that correct, Tammy? He doesn't have to control what's there. He only has to control the additional?
Your first half inch, I think.
Correct.
Okay, so the first half inch is for quality. That's to pick up any kind of grit, oil or anything to keep it out of the streams. So that's the purpose of that. The rest of it is you have to capture, I believe it's a ten-year storm. And it has to be released at a rate, the same rate as it is or less, which will alleviate the problem getting in the st- uh, storm sewer. Because that, that'll, as it releases, it puts a little bit in, but it has the ability to hold it longer.
Okay, and that's, that's a standard I'm gonna have a problem with for this development because this already overruns the capability of the storm sewer, so.
But that's what the detention basin does is it will hold it so that the storm sewer can handle it. It's, is based on the release rate of the detention basin.
Okay.
So it'll release at a rate slower than it is now because per the watershed guidelines, that's what they have to do.
It'll help control some of that sediment runoff.
And that is not there at this moment, correct? That, that does not happen until the development comes in.
Correct.
I was just gonna ask you.
Sure.
Uh, just out of curiosity, why'd you pick this site?
Uh, so we, um, cou- couple of different reasons. Um, we like the, um, l- location as it relates to services and, uh, the Air Force Base being a mile and a half away. Um, a lot of, um, uh, active military can, uh, comply with our requirements as it relates to, uh, the area median incomes. Um, so that's a, a big pull for us. Um, obviously, it's eleven acres of multifamily zoned prod- property. Uh, we are multifamily developers. Um, it's a, um, it, to us, it's a, it's a prime site for, uh, for a, um, for a multifamily development, whether it has multiple buildings or, or, or one. Um, uh, so, uh, again, I think we wanted to be a little bit outside of the, you know, downtown Omaha kind of market, um, because there's a huge need. Um, I think our market study said we would lease these seventy-five units up in two months. Um, so you're talking about a saturation rate of almost nothing, uh, because of the, the need in this area.
Uh, and the reason why I'm asking is you're on the southern end of our city. There's cornfields everywhere. I mean, and I guess I didn't know what attracted you to this particular piece of land where you could just simply be on the side of Highway seventy-five and all that would still meet your criteria of being by off it and et cetera, et cetera, access.
Well, I mean, I think the, the biggest pull is the fact that it's currently zoned. So all of the other land that may or may not exist out there is not zoned and allowed to build multifamily housing like this particular property is.
Well, and there, there's also the opportunity that, um, some of that land in other locations is not available for sale or the price is so exorbitant that it, it doesn't make sense for the development. And I, I just wanted to add, I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Cook. However, I just wanted to say thank you for at least bringing this opportunity to us because there's a huge need for, um, um, family, multifamily units. We saw that after the flooding last year and one of our grade schools, from what I understand, lost a third of their students to, there was just no place for anybody to go. And so they had to go to other locations and this helps fulfill a need. I don't know if this is the location for the need, but just thank you for bringing this for, for us to e- even at least look at it.
Thank you.
One, one of the comments that I wanted to make, and I know this doesn't solve the problem of one access, but if Fort Crook Road would continue south to Normandy Boulevard, you'd have the people coming off of these two southern roads. I, I know someone said Cedar View or Cedar Dell or something, and that other road, those people could hit Fort Crook Road right there at, at, um, Normandy Hills and start shooting north. And then you'd still have that green Grenoble, however you say it, access too. And that would relieve a lot of the congestion at Grenoble and Fort Crook. And the problems of getting up that hill and stuff where people would still have the option of coming farther south and getting on at Normandy Hills and then going into their neighborhood, so. However, I realize it doesn't address going north on that two-lane road. I don't know why. I, it just, it, it just stuns me to think that the state puts in a road like that without any sidewalk, without any streetlights and probably needs to be at least a three or four-lane road.
That is certainly out of my purview.
No, no, I, and I, I'm just making a comment in general, but I still think if Fort Crook Road would go through your property as a city street and would come down to Normandy Hills, I think it would still get, give them a little bit of relief of getting it, not concentrating everything on no- Grenoble Drive. Uh, give them a little bit of access of the people that live on the south side to come, continue to come straight south. People that live on the north side that would wanna access through Green Noble could make the turn and go east into the neighborhood.
I think they're gonna use it anyway, but we don't wanna advertise that, so. Have you looked at whether or not continuing Fort Crook Road would allow you to still get your development in there?
So, you know, it's, you're talking about right along the seventy-five, just straight down on the,
The western edge of your property, right.
Um, you know, I, I wanna say that we did look at that early on when we were talking to the state and, and folks like that and it just wasn't, you know, really something, A, that the state was into. Uh, um, in, in, in it, you know, it, I, I am sure that there's probably some way for that to occur. Um, but it, it just didn't seem like a reasonable, um, thing, uh, for us to, to kind of explore. Um, there'd have to be a purchase of land and all sorts of other things that would have to go on, you know, for that to happen. Um, you know, from, again, from our perspective, the way we're looking at this project is we went through this process solely to provide a development for this parcel that's better than what is currently allowed. And that's why we're standing here today. W- we think that this fits the community better. We think that there's, um, there's gonna be something developed on this site one, one, at one point in time, whether it's us or someone else. And, and we felt like we did, um, the right thing and, and came in and, and designed a project that fits the neighborhood more than what is currently allowed under zoning. And, 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 and we think we did that. Um, and we think that we did that at a, at a pretty high level.
If I might discuss access along, uh, Highway thirty-four, to your point, Mr. Shannon. So the state has controlled access along Highway seventy-five. They also have it along Highway thirty-four. Um, they won't let you do, their controlled access is a quarter mile. So I know we don't show it up there on that GIS, but the state has a planned access for, there's a stubout location for access to the north and it lines up with South Eighth Street, which is the access that goes down into La Platte. And that would be a quarter mile from where the on and off ramps are to seventy-five. So the state is not gonna allow anyone to do access in between those on ramps and South Eighth Street. South Eighth Street would be the next point at which we would be allowed to tap into Highway thirty-four. South Eighth Street roughly lines up with Euro that comes down to that stubout out of Normandy Hills. So the state planned it that way when they planned Highway thirty-four.
Agreed, but we still need Fort Crook Road to come down the western edge of this property to get to Normandy Hills to provide that relief. Because people can't get up Grenoble in the winter and it's a blockage already. But if we, if we approve this as drawn, um, we cut off that, that possibility of fixing that. Even with the stubout coming down later, we need Fort Crook Road to continue down to Normandy. I would, I would be much more supportive of this project if you could show us a drawing that did that. Councilman Prester.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Uh, one thing that this development does is bring a lot of attention to Grenoble, the problems of traffic, the problems at the intersection, the problems of snow and clearing, the hill and the ability to see to get through the intersection, the seven to eight o'clock in the morning and the evening, the children and the buses. I appreciate all the residents who've taken time to come to give us that information. Uh, we've got a lot of people at home seeing and being aware of that too. Uh, it does seem like a nice development and something that would help off it and the whole area. Uh, again, I'm looking at whether or not this may be the best location for it. I'm wondering, my question is, what, what's the status of the land? Have you put a purchase agreement on it but haven't actually closed on the land? What's the status of, of the land in your application contingent upon things, I would assume?
Yeah, we, uh, we have an option now to purchase the land, uh, with some extensions built in. Uh, I think those, uh, run out sometime here in the next, you know, few months, but, um, uh, but yes, uh, we, we have not purchased the land, uh, and so we don't own title to it, but, um, but we do have control of it.
Okay, and then you mentioned that the zoning was appealing to have this particular area because it's residential. The ag land that's around there could also be rezoned and, uh, when we get developments, we're looking fairly favorable and maybe could have more land with more of the open space as the one gentleman said, you have in some of the other development areas. I, I don't know if you have looked at other sites and then narrowed it down to this one or if there are some other potentials in the area.
Sure, yeah, and I do wanna just make a clarification is, um, you are correct. We could go out and purchase land and, and go through, buy ag land and rezone it and we'd be right back here in this, you know, in this room and having that same discussion. Um, the only reason that we are here having this discussion is because we are changing the zoning from what I would consider a much more cumbersome zoning to something that is much, much more palatable to the neighborhood. So i- in theory, um, we, we can build a three-story, you know, apartment complex on this site. I can go to plans permit tomorrow, uh, with, with that design. We decided to come in and go through the process, involve the neighborhood. Um, obviously, the access has come up kind of since then. Um, and, 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 and it has become a focal point here and we, we fully recognize that. But, um, but we, we are only going through a rezoning process to what we feel is making this project better.
Thank you.
If the city council does not approve the rezone, are you still going to build the hundred and eighty-seven unit apartment complex?
I doubt we would do that large, but yes, we would look at a one-building project, uh, for this.
Okay.
So Tammy, if, um, if they just change their plans, they could come in, put a hundred and eighty-four units on and not have to have any city council approval.
Correct. Um, what they are asking for is a site plan approval. They're asking for that planned subdivision appendage onto the existing multifamily zoning, just to simply allow multiple buildings on one lot. If they want to do one building, if they want to do two buildings that are connected with a walkway, um, or some type of connection, yes, they could come in tomorrow with those plans, go through the administrative approval process and get permits. And legally, I couldn't deny them because the zoning is already in place to allow for that.
I think that's important to realize, so. Any other questions? Public hearing is still open. Is there anyone left out there that hasn't spoke that would like to say something? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. And thank you all for your input. I, I know everybody's listening to it. It's good input and, uh, you know, we're gonna get a lot out of it. The third reading for ordinance number three nine eight seven will be March third, two thousand twenty at six P M here in the council chambers. Item twelve C, ordinance number three nine eight nine, request to rezone Lot One, Casio's Edition Number One from BG PCO to RG twenty for the purpose of an existing multifamily residential building. Applicant Sheltering Tree Housing Corporation, location one nine zero three Greg Road. Susan, could you read the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska is provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about nineteen oh three Greg Road more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and I'll open the public hearing and, uh, looks like Mr. Hossi's gonna back up. Present again.
Kyle Hossi, E and A Consulting Group, representing the applicant. Uh, my address is one oh nine oh nine Mill Valley Road, Omaha. Um, the property that we are discussing today, um, is located on the corner of Galvin Road and Greg Road. It is approximately a two-acre site and is currently zoned BG. Uh, we are requesting a rezone to RG twenty. Um, this is to bring the site in compl- into compliance. When the building was originally approved and accepted, um, it was, um, multifamily was in approved use within the BG zoning. Um, since then, that, uh, allowed use has changed. Uh, the use as is now and it will continue to be is a Sheltering Tree community. Uh, Sheltering Tree provides secure and supervised apartment communities for persons with development, developmental disabilities, providing them an opportunity, uh, to live productive and independent lives. Um, there is a great need for this use in the Bellevue area and as a result, Sheltering Tree is looking to expand their current building. Um, they want to have all their zoning in line when the time comes. Um, so that is the reason for, uh, being in front of you, uh, this evening. Um, I don't know. Yes, Shirley McNally with, um, Sheltering Tree is also in the audience and she's available for, uh, any questions that you might have as, as far as myself as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions before we open the, we go on public hearing? Okay, the public hearing is open. Uh, anybody, anybody wishing to speak on ordinance number three nine eight seven, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number three nine eight seven. Any questions, comments for the council? Councilwoman Welch.
So, um, is it Ms. Mr. Ha- Hossi's? Okay, so what they're wanting to do is how many, how many residents are there now ballpark approximately and, and what are we going to?
There is approximately eleven units right now.
Okay.
I think the plan for, uh, the addition is up to twelve additional units.
Okay, and, um, I don't think Captain Stukenholz, we don't, we haven't had any issues with, um, any crime, violence or crimes or anything with regards to this?
I'm not aware of anything incredible with this residence, no.
Okay, and is it just because of the need? That's the reason you just need to?
There's a big need in the area.
Make it bigger? Cause I, I know when I've walked past it on many times, it looks nice, it's well taken care of, well manicured. Um, it's, it's a great-looking property, so, thank you.
Councilman Prester.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would not expect any police presence there other than something coming in and doing it. Uh, Shirley McNally and the, uh, people who work at the home and have organized it have been very diligent in taking care of it and making it an appealing location in giving tours and opening it to other people to see the benefits to these young people. Uh, they're certainly very gifted in many ways, young adults who just need a little bit of structure. And that structure is highly provided. They go to work, they have jobs, they're gainfully employed. They have a sense of worth. They have a sense of worth because of being there. Uh, the site was developed and, and the funding and the grant money was brought into the community. Uh, almost a million and a half dollars that was brought in through grants to help develop and build it. On a site that sat virtually forever in Bellevue, empty, undevelopable, a nice, high-location site. But it's, it's a very good use, no water drainage problems, it's, all the water is contained with the containment sites. Uh, I could go on and on about the benefits, including the gardens that the young people there are able to plant on the site. So, I, I think it's an extremely well-run organization by very dedicated. A group of, uh, Christian church members who put their spiritual beliefs into action. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, the third reading on ordinance number three-nine-eight-seven will be March third, two thousand twenty at six P M. here in the council chambers. Item thirteen ordinances for introduction, first reading, we have none. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, fourteen A, approve event application for Bellevue Chamber of Commerce in partnership with Offutt Air Force Base. For the runway run on Saturday, May ninth, two thousand twenty, from six A M. to nine-thirty A M. for a five-k race starting at the V P S Lead Center. To Offutt Air Force Base Flag Gate and onto a segment of runway returning to V P S Lead Start Point. I'll open that for public hearing, is there anybody here wishing to speak on the runway run? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Welch.
I'll make a motion that we accept, uh, approve the event application for the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce. And I understand that you've been at the gym and you're gonna run in this, so.
No, I've.
Okay.
Been walking, been walking at the gym.
But I'll, I'll make a motion to accept this.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Preister, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, item fifteen resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two-zero-two-zero-dash-thirteen. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the final design supplemental agreement number one for amended work regarding South Thirty-Sixth Street. Highway thirty to Sheridan Road. Highway three-seventy, maybe? Highway three-seventy to Sheridan Road. Councilman Shannon.
I would make a motion to approve Resolution two-zero-two-zero-dash-one-three.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister, any further comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, item sixteen, current business, sixteen A. Approve the condemnation, track C fourteen, also known as one-eighteen-twenty-nine Amorado Boulevard, Bellevue, six-eight-one-two-three, Pheasant Ridge. Permanent and temporary easements for the Thirty-Sixth Street Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand two-hundred-and-ninety dollars. Councilwoman Welch.
I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen A.
I'll second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Shannon, any further questions, comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal with. Crouch Recreation for Two Springs Park and Playground Equipment in an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand six-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen B.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the bid of A V I for removal of all electronics in the city council chambers. Prior to the removal of the column in the council chambers in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand four-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and thirty-six cents. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen C.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, any comments or questions? Councilman Shannon.
What is the timeframe of this project? Because a year ago, it sounds good to me.
Mr. Risto.
Going out to bid, Jeff, what, thirty days before we get all that back and?
Yeah, went out for bid, which is the next item on here to approve the contractor. So I need to make arrangements with A V I to get their schedule, they're kind of the, uh, milestone right now. So once I get their schedule set up, then approximately two weeks after they start, then we'll bring in the contractor. Who then has thirty days to do all the, uh, demo and rebuilding, all the structural and finishing work.
So how long are we gonna be out of here?
We should only be two meetings. We'll start, we'll set it up so we immediately, like, tomorrow, that we would start it and then we'd probably be. For enough room to have those two extra meetings, uh, someplace, held off-site.
I think we've already secured that, so we're gonna use the public schools facility where they hold their board meetings.
Yes, we just have to get the time that we needed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, please vote.
All voted yes.
Item sixteen D, approve and authorize the lowest bid of Lund Ross Constructors for the Column Removal Project in the City Council Chambers in an amount not to exceed. Seventy-five thousand one-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars plus ten percent contingency totaling eighty-two thousand six-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and eighty cents. Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve sixteen D, finally.
Second.
One job.
Uh, motion by Welch, seconded by Cook. We're not removing sixteen D, we're removing the poll raise.
We are going to. Approve sixteen D and tell Mr. Roberts, Mr. Roberts, take down that poll.
Any questions, comments? Councilman Preister.
Just a brief comment, and we don't like the poll, but we probably also don't like spending ninety-some thousand dollars, so. Uh, I'm choking, but I'm gonna spend the money.
Uh, just to maybe ease your mind a little bit, Councilman, it probably would've cost the same amount if we'd have done it during construction. So I am pretty pleased with the, the way, the way the bid came in.
That wasn't a criticism, it's just.
No, I, I get, I just want.
Anything we do costs money.
Yeah.
And people don't like the blockage of visibility, but they also may complain about spending money, so.
Yeah.
But I hear what you're saying, it would've had to cost no matter when.
Been there anyways, yes.
And, and just for the asking, are we getting the podium cut down?
Well, we did order one and it came in broke, so I'm not sure exactly what's, what's going on with it now. It, it came in several pieces when they opened the box up.
Well, they're working with All Makes to take that one back and give us another one, so through the construction phase, that'll be resolved. Much thinner, too.
So I might as well add that I gave Jim two jobs to get done when I first hired him, that was to get rid of the pole and shorten the podium. It's been fourteen months, I'm not sure if that's good or.
Government at work here.
Andy wants a raise? It's a different topic.
I don't know what I'm working at next week, but.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Cook, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, sixteen E, approve, approval to purchase new vehicles for the police fleet in an amount not to exceed five-hundred-and-seventeen thousand six-hundred-and-eleven dollars. Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve sixteen E.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch, to approve sixteen E, any further questions? Or comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Sterus Cycle in amount of a hundred and eighty dollars per year. Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve sixteen G, uh, sixteen F, I'm sorry, sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Cook, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, sixteen G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal with Jaime's Corp. For an emergency culvert repair on Fort Crook in an amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen G.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, item sixteen H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract addendum with Waystar Clearing House, also known as Zermd, in an amount.
Zermad.
That makes sense, also known as Zermad, it's getting late. In an amount of a ninety-nine dollar implementation fee plus approximately a hundred and seventy-five to three hundred dollars per month. What's that? Oh, one hundred and seventy-five to two hundred dollars per month. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, recommend that we approve item sixteen H.
I'll second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Shannon, to approve sixteen H, any questions or comments? Councilman Shannon.
Yep, I called Chief Widdow earlier today and, uh, I appreciate him taking my call, answering my questions and, uh, no, I, I support this. Uh, in the cover sheet on this one, um, he's, he's making it look like we're only saving about eight cents a statement. It's way bigger than that because he's not counting the labor. Uh, the, 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 the cost to his people doing this manually, yeah, very time-consuming. He's gonna be getting back a lot of time, plus the hard costs that we're seeing already, you know, in our packet, so this is a really good thing for them.
Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, moves us to seventeen administrative reports, which, uh, administration's in the process of revising that process. So there are no reports this meeting, any questions on that? Councilman Preister.
Since it does say reviving it, I guess it's open for discussion, just, could Jim, could you give us an update on what you're looking at or what you're doing with it?
Yeah, I'm gonna put something out, I'll put something out to the entire council looking for what you're looking for. Not everybody is in the same boat as to what is submitted, not everybody submits something. Um, there's some things we don't want in those because of confidentiality, so, uh, just kind of work through what is. What are you looking for to see and then how do we consolidate that, make streamline that to get that out to you, so you'll get something back from me here probably next week.
Good, and streamlining it so we know what people are doing, but not so that it's taking up a lot of their time.
Yes, it's just become, I, I don't want to say a cumbersome task, but it looks like in some cases it becomes a, what I did this week, things-to-do list. So we want to get, remove some of that, get more of the, more important things in, but not without congesting it either, so.
Sure, good, I support that, thank you.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Shannon, any further questions? Please vote. Oh, there was no, never mind, forget it. We'll accept that. We'll accept the administrative revising process, whatever it is. And I'll take a motion, there is no closed session, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Shannon, seconded by Preister to adjourn. Those opposed, remain here until the next meeting.
All voting yes.